Good evening, everyone. I first report that the Town Council has just concluded a closed meeting with regard to performance evaluation of the Town Manager. There were no actions to report. It is April 9th, 2025, at 5:36, and I call this meeting of the Moraga Town Council to order. Roll call. Let the record show that all Town Council members are present excluding Vice Mayor Pledge of Allegiance. Graham, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Presentations? There are no presentations tonight. Public communication. This is time reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the Town Council on items that are not on this agenda. You will have up to three minutes to make your comment. The Council cannot discuss details or vote on items not on the agenda. If necessary, questions may be referred to the Town Manager for a brief comment or for further review. I see no members of the public here, so we can move forward. Item five is adoption of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as proposed?
Move to adopt the meeting agenda as proposed.
Is there a second? Second, that's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously with the four members present. Consent agenda. Consideration of consent agendas removed from for discussion. Are there? Does a member of the Council wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Are there public comments on any of the consent agendas? There are no public. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agendas items as proposed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That moves us on to 6.1, approval of minutes for the March 20th. Nope, nope, those are all, excuse me, those are all the consent agendas. Announcements and reports on activities. Are there any Councilmember reports on AB 1, 2, 3, 4 activities? Councilmember announcements? Brian, would you like to start?
Lisa and I went to a board meeting for CalRecycle. Was that after our last meeting? Yes. I'll let you just, I'll let you say, tell what we talked about. I also went to, I'm on the Finance Committee for that group, and we went over the budget. We are in the middle of consideration of a new franchisee for garbage and recycling collection. That process is ongoing. One thing I did learn at the Finance Committee meeting has nothing to do with CalRecycle, but if you are aware of the past when CalCities has sponsored a competitive bocce ball game amongst Councilmembers, and I don't know if we have ever participated.
We have.
Well, I learned that they are transitioning now to a cornhole competition.
That's correct.
Which makes me very excited. And so I'm wondering, are any of my fellow Councilmembers are proficient at cornhole?
Well, good.
Graham?
Happy to support you and your efforts. Is this a partnership thing, or?
I'm, I'm just curious, have we got any talent?
It'll be a team event.
A team event.
Team events.
Okay.
Anyway, we have a date, I believe it's June 26th. Put it on your calendar. Don't leave town if you're good. That's it.
Thank you. Graham?
I'll keep it brief. Had the pleasure of joining the monthly Contra Costa Mayor's Conference with our mayor. It's great to see the network that is, all of the various representatives from Contra Costa County. Just refreshing to see local government at work, and really fun to see that group gather on a couple of months in a row. Also attended the St. Mary's and UCLA Rugby Match with some of the fine folks seated here. Really fun, engaging event.
Thank you. Lisa?
A couple of things to piggyback on to Councilmember Dolan with respect to RecycleSmart. I am on the ad hoc franchise selection committee. We have received bids. We are working our way through that process. I too attended the rugby game on Saturday, and it was, it was a good day for all, and I attended before that, as did our Town Manager, the President's reception at his lovely home. And as liaison to St. Mary's, it was a good day to be able to talk with the leadership team at the college and further establish good relationships. And. Oh, there was also another guest there, thank you. Fiona Ma, our State Treasurer, attended as well. And thank you, Scott, for reaching out to her, and she was pleased to attend, and she also indicated that if there was anything that her office could do to support Moraga, she would be glad to do so. So that was another relationship that was very important to attend to, so we appreciate that. And lastly, yesterday, I attended the La Merinda School Bus Transportation Authority Board Meeting. That was the first meeting I have attended. There will be a new contract with the same operator, First Student. The contract is extended for five years, and new rates are on the website. And that's it.
Thank you. What I'll talk about are just really one thing primarily. Last week, the Councilmember Malio and I and Town Manager Scott Mitnick all were able to have a lunch engagement with the President of St. Mary's College and his leadership team. And that again continues to build our relationship, continuing building that relationship with St. Mary's College, critically important, very much appreciate the outreach of St. Mary's College, their leadership team, and moving our cooperative efforts forward. And I also attended the Mayor's Conference last Thursday night with Graham. Thank you. Town Manager, do you have any further announcements you'd like to cover at this point?
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, I normally wait to the end, but I have a couple. Since you did mention St. Mary's College, and I just pulled up the bracket online. So there are a lot of great sports programs at the college, men and women, a lot of great academic programs, performing arts, all that stuff. But we're in the sports frame of mind at the moment. So you mentioned the rugby game, which was against UCLA. They're like 10 times the size, maybe 20 times the size in terms of enrollment, but you would never guess it by watching the competition on the field. So it was a great win, and UCLA is a very good team. So now, St. Mary's advances to the second round. They will play Central Washington, who beat BYU. So they'll play them Saturday, so you can go again, for those of you that missed. Brian, you could go if you want, not to call out anybody, but that'll be this weekend on Saturday. Now, Brian, if they win, it's likely they'll play Cal the following week. Just FYI. So that'll be a really fun event. So there's some other stuff I'll mention toward, toward the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moves us on to item eight, which is public hearings. There are no public hearings items this evening. Department reports. Townwide Street Management Program update. Is there a presentation on this subject? And this is, this is not for decision making, this is just an update, is that correct?
Yeah, it's part of the budget process, so your Public Works Director will make a presentation. Are you going up to the mic up there? All right. This is a riveting topic, street maintenance. And he's supported by his talented staff.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you.
I'm ready.
You're ready?
Yes, thank.
The floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Thanks to you for your patience. So I did prepare one slide to talk about, and that's the beginning slide. I actually have a lot of slides, but I'm going to go through them rather quickly. And if we can hold questions maybe to the end, we can go back and look at any particular thing you want to dive into more deeply. But just want to start out with a little bit of a prepared statement. Try not to read it verbatim, but good, yeah, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm your Public Works Director, Sean Knapp. I'm joined here by some of our staff, Nate Levine and also Deidre Castillo. But one of the first, before we do the presentation, I wanted to start out with some thank yous. Thank yous to the Council. Thank you to the past Councils. Thank you for our Town Manager and past Town Managers for the strategic decisions that you've made in the past relative to staffing of the Public Works and the strategic decisions you made with the public, the pavement management or the street management program. So in the past, Public Works has operated on very minimum staff, particularly engineering staff. And over the years, the Town Council, Town Manager, myself analyzed our staffing levels and looked at the costs that we were using with consultants. And we typically had just a few people in the house and a lot of consultants, and it's quite expensive to deliver projects. And so that hard work and those decisions have paid off in the last few years, where we hired very competent staff who have actually realized savings in projects and turned that savings back into investing in the projects and actually delivering more projects, more improvements. And since Deidre joined me today, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick on her today. She runs our storm drain program, and so it's about a $1.6 million program, and she manages it very tightly. And so her analyzing of the, of the sites and looking at potential savings and how do we do things, she changed up a number of things, and she saved about $300,000 in cost in that storm drain program and added five different locations addition to what we had already scheduled in the program. So we've accomplished a lot, and that's just one example of our staff. So you have very competent staff. So I'll move right into the formal presentation here. So today, we're going to look at kind of where we've come, come from, what is our, what is our street management philosophies, how we operate, how we vary and stuff. We're going to look a little bit of our past to give you a perspective of pre Measure K. We're going to look at the time after Measure K. We're going to look at the last five years, because the last time we had an update was in 2020, where I came before the Council, and we'll get into that a little later, and came up with a different scheme of how we attached or attacked our pavement management. And then we're going to look at the results, and then we're going to look into the future and see from the Council's perspective, are we going on the right course, or where should we make changes and such. So that's the outline of the presentation. So we're going to just talk quickly, high level. I won't read every slide verbatim, but just for grounding, we have about 56 79 miles of streets. That's about 10 million square feet of pavement. Our PCI is up to amazing 78%. And, but with that, we hold a lot of responsibility, and it's almost $160 million worth of investment you have in your streets. That's the cost to replace them. And we have about $22 million worth of deferred maintenance. That's maintenance that as we go along, we go through deterioration, and we pass that deterioration, and we don't fix it. And so those are declining streets. So we utilize, just like all the 109 other agencies in the Bay Area, we utilize Streetsaver. It's a online software that MTC, that's Metropolitan Transportation Commission, manages funding for street projects and such. And so everybody's required to have some kind of software. Everybody ends up using the same software in order to get federal funding and have a program. Quickly, you know, our streets are being attacked by different environmental elements, physical elements, and this kind of gives you a quick overview. Heat, cold, water, time are all working against us. But we also have car loading, truck loading, that is also working at deteriorating the streets. Very illustrative picture here, but what's, what's interesting is the cars have very minimal impact relative to the trucks. And as you go up in size in trucks, the, the ratio of how much more impact a large truck has on the streets is incredible. And so as you can see, the scale increases up to about, you know, almost 15,000 times worse than a single vehicle with a very large vehicle. And that's why we have different mechanisms to protect our streets. We have a hauling permit, which is unique to Moraga, that's more looking at the protection when we have construction projects coming into town. We also have transportation permits, garbage impact fees that we use to repair the streets and such. Quick overview of our pavement management strategies. We have what we call soy seals, overlays, and reconstructions are 1, 2, 3. It's kind of like how you protect a house. You paint the house when it, to keep it, the siding in good shape. Eventually, you have to replace the siding over time, and eventually you have to replace more than siding or even the foundation, so that would be our reconstructions. They, the strategies that we use are typically three different strategies. The first being maintain the best streets, because those are the least expensive to maintain and keep good. They're very cost effective, they keep a good street good. Then there's the bottom up, which you repair the worst streets, because they have the most needs, because they're very bad. And then there's what we call the critical point management, which is Streetsaver, trying to catch the, the street when it's declining before it gets to a worse condition, and it's a critical point. And this graph shows the decline over time of the pavement, pavement and the different types of treatments you would apply. This is just a scale of those different breakpoints. Again, as you go through, you have a good street, it's declining in PCI, and there's different treatments that you would attach to it as it goes through different lifespans and deteriorations. Here's that same, same graph that we saw a couple, a couple slides before, showing the, the cost impact. If you can, in the green up here in the left, it's fairly inexpensive to provide soy seals, crack sealing, and other type of preventative maintenance versus going all the way to the right here, which you're reconstructing the streets, which we did a lot of that recently. And that could be up to $150 per square yard, very expensive. So we try to keep it up, the, the work in the higher zones here, before it ever gets to that. Some just quick pictures to give you a relative understanding of where different PCIs are. And again, these are representative pictures, they may be pictures from a few years, it's representing that particular condition at the time. We've gone through and repaired a number of these streets, so that, these are older pictures, but it represents the PCI. But a good is considered anything above 75. An affair is between 50 and 75. Poor is between 25, I mean 5, I'm sorry, 25 and 50. Again, another street showing a lot of allegation. It's 50 between 25 and 50. It's Redfield Place, and it's Springfield. And then lastly, the worst streets are the ones severely failing. It's, it's cracking in every place possible. Puddles are forming, base failures are forming, and those are, and those are very poor streets, under 25 PCI. So now we'll go into a little, little pre-history before Measure K. So many, many agencies were suffering back in the early 2000s, when the state was holding back money during economic times, and that money was going into various programs, including infrastructure repair. And many of our neighbors were in the same boat as us, and they had declining PCIs, pavement condition index of their, of their streets. And the Town Council and the community formed what they call RECON, which is a group looking at initiatives to save the infrastructure, streets, storm drains, and other things. And so back in 2008 and '09, they formed a group to start resourcing this and came back to the Council with some recommendations, which ended up being the passing of Measure K by over 70% of the voters in Moraga, so quite successful. At that time, in 2012, the PCI had declined to 49. We were a little bit ahead of our, our neighbors, we could say, two points. Arinda was the, the second worst agency in the Bay Area at one point for two years running. So we, 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 like Arinda, passed a number of measures to have the PCI go up based on the influx of the sales tax. Okay, just moving ahead here. And as I mentioned, we, we passed, Measure K was passed. We bonded against Measure K in the beginning to start a $7.7 million, three-year intensive program. It's better to pay for it now than later, because it just gets more expensive. And again, our PCI raised from 49 up to 70 in 2015 with this intensive program, and then up to 74 by 2020. And we were using what we call that a balance program, which was the preventive maintenance mixed in with some overlays, rubberized chip seals, and a few of the reconstructions. So now we'll talk a little bit about 2020. Five years ago, we came to the Council and said that at that point, we had done very well with this balance program, and we wanted to approach, looking at this whole list, many of the streets would not, residential streets and other streets would never get repaved, would never get touched if we continued to use the balanced approach, because the software always looks toward balancing the budget, getting the best PCI. We'll, we'll attack a few of the worst streets, but it's not going to sink all its money into the worst streets. But we said if we could do this quickly, we could, you know, change the, the approach and go after the worst streets, because we had actually declined the worst streets between a little over 10% for the poor streets and a little over 3% for the very poor streets. And so it was a great opportunity, and the Council said, yes, let's do this on a speed, speedy basis, on a fast track, and we'll, we'll look at that, and then we'll come back after that program and look at what we could do next. So that's why we're here today. We, we raised up to a 78, which is very good. I'll show some graphs. Puts us in the 86 percentile of the Bay Area. This is just a graph showing in 2020 versus 2025. You know, we've reduced those very poor streets, and we also have a plan for in 2025 to address those poor streets. They're all, it's part of the plan, the next phase of work. So things are looking very bright. You have a blown up of, of that map, you can probably see a lot better in your map, but there's only a, a few streets there that are not either blue or the green. So that, the yellow prominently, the yellow street is our, our Moraga Road and Canyon Road, which is scheduled to be done next year. So we're gonna be, it's a planned street, so it's, it's thought out, and that'll turn a course to, to the brighter colors that we're looking at. I've mentioned how the PCI has risen. This is just a graph of the PCI over time, based on the programs and the, of each individual I've mentioned how we are at 78 now, and this is a look kind of comparing to some of our neighbors in the Bay Area. You, we've surpassed Lafayette now, which is a good accomplishment, and we're just, we're actually chasing Arinda, it's a few points ahead of us now. So the next graph shows you segments that we've worked on within the, the town. And again, the goal of the Council was in 2020 is to make sure we touch every residential street in this cycle that we have currently with Measure K. And if we move on with a balanced approach, which we're suggesting, we, in the next 20 years, we'd be tackling another 326 or so segments of this, of the town. I'll go through this really quickly, and you have this in your presentation, so we don't have to dwell on it, but you know, I just want to keep you, give you the information. Year by year, we did projects year by year in the last five years. 2020 project concentrated on mill and fills and reconstructions, those are the streets up there. Here's some of the product from those that work in the residential areas. We paved 10 streets over 2,000 square yards of paved area and almost 400 square yards of concrete repaired. In 2021, a different program, looking at micro-surfacing, resurfacing, crack sealing. Here's some of the streets from there. Fernwood, Ashford, Via Granada. And we did 14 streets in that year, 25, 2,400 yards paved, 462 square yards of concrete. And we did 14 streets in that year, 25, 2400 yards paved, 462 square yards of concrete So in 2022, and I went a little fast there, 2022, we had a different program doing rubberized chip seals, some mill and fill overlays. That's where we grind out the existing pavement and put down new pavement, replacing the old fractured pavement. And in that, we have got Camino Ricardo. I said some examples where we did also do the ADA improvements, curb ramp improvements. Camino Ropalo picture there, we're doing microsurfacing or rubberized chip seal combination there. Gaywood pavement on the left, same thing was happening on Chui Drive. And we did 40 streets. This is our big lifts in those last two years, the 40 streets that we were building up to 4,500 square yards paved and 886 square square yards of concrete. And we have another project, 23. We're showing Corliss Drive, Springfield, Redfield, Butterfield Place. We had 28 streets paved in that, 3,000 square yards paved and over 2,600 square yards of concrete. As you can see, we're these projects were massive. It took a few years to go through the engineering design and get clearance for utilities and such to make it an open field for us to work through these streets. So we're building through this to finish out the worst first streets. And then on the last project, 2024, last year's project, rubberized chip seals, more mill and fills, crack sealing, samples of St. Mary's and Whipperville Street, Maraga Road, which we did some extensive landslide repairs on the shoulder near the creek, Paso del Rio via Granada. And that we paid 24 streets, 2,600 square yards and 1,700 square yards of concrete prepared, another massive project. Okay, now let's talk about potentials, what we're recommending for the the next 20 years. And we did a 20-year analysis. We don't usually go out that far, but we do have the sun setting of Measure K in 2032. So we wanted to give you an understanding what would happen with and without Measure K. And we did a lot of difference scenarios using the street saver. And particularly in the report, we focus on four. So built into, you know, the pavement management is other projects that we're going to be discussing kind of interwoven into the into the street program are our safety projects. As we're doing road projects, we add safety elements to those. And I just want to highlight some of the excellent work that Nate's been doing. We're very lucky to have a registered registered traffic engineer on staff. It's not very unique for a very small agency. And just a couple of slides here, we completed a number of projects that you're probably very well aware of. Of course, on Maraga Road, buffered bike lanes. We did the Maraga Road Safety Study, which developed another another number of quick action projects that we incorporated into the paving work. We did the first phase of Corliss Drive, the sidewalks along Corliss Drive or the school. And all this is being done in-house using our staff due to the designer, much of the project management. We have ongoing projects. As you can probably see, we have four different safety projects that are going on in the townwide with improving crosswalks, signage, stop signs, you know, traffic striping, refreshing that ongoing right now. We're also working on ADA push signal upgrades at a number of locations. So those are kind of ongoing right now in construction. And then in the future, we all we all have projects that are in the design phase, in the grant application phase or in concept design. So number of other projects that we have also in the pike, we're working on for the next level of projects in over the next couple of years. Back in 2020, we we were very concerned, and as we should be, about tripping hazards in on public facilities, particularly in the parks or parking lots and pathways. And we were getting a number of trip and fall complaints or claims against the town. So as our process would be was at that time was to go out there and look for those particular issues and dress them on a kind of spot by spot basis, make sure we we have safe facilities. But we were using money to fix the residential streets, so we weren't going to do full-on replacements of pathways or parking lots and such and upgrade them to the highest standards. We were delaying that work, but purposely we were going out and doing inspections to reduce or eliminate any trip and fall claims. And so we've been doing that successfully. Those things have died down. But now we'd like to weave into our program, looking at fixing our parking lots, particularly our public spaces where the public goes to. And we're liable if there's, you know, trip and fall claims. And so I have three different parking lots, you know, highlighted there. You can see the PCI is quite low, but we have plans in the works to fix all those through the pavement program over time. And we'll come back to you as we get closer to any individual projects. Just want to highlight also built into traditionally what's built into the the street projects. If we were working on a street, we look at it holistically. We look at what the if we need new curb ramps, if we need to replace curb and gutter. And if there's pipes underneath the streets, we go and investigate and see the condition of the pipes. And if they need to be fixed, we fix those to prevent any damage to the street above it. And so traditionally, with all our street projects, we have all these other components that go into the project itself. We were fortunate to get ARPA funding a few years ago. We were using that. We're almost done using what was available to us to our jurisdiction. And we've been using a lot of that for storm drains, independent of the streets, storm drain projects that Deirdre's been managing and doing quite well at. But we still have a number of locations that have been identified in our master plan for storm drain repairs that we'd like to have a cutout from the street programs, about 600,000 for the first seven years, to address not only the some storm drain, particular storm drain issues before they become issues with the roadway. And also, we have a number of landslide issues or under structural issues underneath our roadways that need to be addressed before they become worse. And so there's a list of four different locations. Here are three different locations, about a million dollars worth of those type of repairs. That work would also come out of the the cutout for the 600,000 per year. Typically, we would all be into the paving program, but we're trying to identify these and address these to make sure they get taken care of because they're they're sectional versus the road projects usually are much longer and they're not looking at small sections of the roadway. So the the four main scenarios that we focused on in the street management analysis was starting from the top of the graph and the top of the the bullets there is scenario six was to maintain a PCI of 78. It becomes quite expensive. The higher you go in the PCI, the more money it takes to stay up high. So the cost there is about $6 million when you average it over the 20-year period, about $6 million per year. We currently don't have that much funding now. So that would be probably a hard we'd have to make a lot of adjustments to try to come up with that type of funding, not very typical. The next approach is is what we call scenario five, but it's what's our balance approach, looking at all different types of repairs that we try to maximize the PCI as best we can. The first seven years, we'd have the cutout for the $600,000 for the storm drains and the the road repairs. And then and that's assuming that we hopefully the voters would pass Measure K in in 2032 and renew it and we could continue funding the program at that level. The next the next scenario, scenario one, looks at funding the program with the cutout of 600,000 every year. And so that would go on for 20 years. And so it decreases the PCI slightly to 70. In this scenario, it's an average of about $3.7 million annually. And the last scenario that we looked at is if Measure K dropped out after 2032, what would that effect have? 65% of the funding for the paving program comes from Measure K. And it would have a sniffing effect on the PCI and the way we maintain streets, but just like it was before we had Measure K. Some comparisons, the Arinda has a 1% sales tax also. They generate about three and a half, 3.6 million dollars per year for their sales tax. We're about two and a half, you know, plus or minus something. So they have a slightly more robust commercial development. So if if in the future, we imagine some additional commercial development, that would also result in higher sales tax, would result in additional funding for the program, which would definitely change this graph and how it looks. Okay, so again, the staff is recommending the balanced approach, using a mixture of different types of treatment to maintain the PCI at its highest level. We also looked at using a very conservative cost increases to this, using full-on loaded costs. I can predict that how we've done things in the past and recent years with the staff, we can find cost savings. These are like generalized costs if we're using a consultant to do the work and all the full of the cost. But if we're able to use some staff, I could also see savings, which again, would go back into the the cost of the projects reinvested and we would actually do better. PCI would go up again. The benefits, of course, of the balance in in this approach and how we do it, we feel it's going to be very proactive addressing our needs. It's we've the council has passed a a street policy, cost sharing policy, which benefits each of the property owners in that we share the cost or with when we're doing concrete repairs, we call it the sidewalk area. If it's a Measure K project in during construction and we have Measure K funds available, we'll use those Measure K funds to do the work for the concrete repairs. The policy says as long as we have Measure K funds, if we expend all the Measure K funds, then we there is no available after that. So it all depends on how much available Measure K funds are there. So we'll do as much as we can to benefit the public as possible. And and it's shared because we're trying to go around and touch every street, every residential street in the community so everybody get a chance to have the benefit. And that's where we think it builds the public trust, the council passing this this cost sharing policy. Okay, so this is this is a map again, again, showing we're going to be doing a lot of different treatments, the different colors of the treatments, it's not the PCI. But again, it shows that we're going to be basically touching, if not all the the streets within those, every street within that 20 years with the balanced program. Because we're we're already here in April and and the budget doesn't get passed until end of June here, we do have money already set aside for the program to start working on this. But if the council is so agreeable that we use a balanced approach and we get the feedback to move forward, the program for the first year is going to be a little smaller because the the days are going by here. And so we'll do this in-house, we'll get a number of streets. This is just a starting list that we've looked at are some of the worst worst streets or some of the streets that needs some needs, mostly in the Maraga Country Club area. But as we move forward, we'll develop a final list, we'll come back to the council, of course, and and get your blessing on what we're doing and move forward. But just to give you an idea, the first year is going to be a little smaller because we're running out of time here in the year. But it will ramp up based on what the council wants as far as our approach. And that is the end of my formal presentation. Welcome, any questions?
It's a minor question. Got one little red spot. Does that go to the school?
Yeah, so we we did, we paved the street outside the school and it's it's almost like a driveway. It's a it's not more than 50 feet. And we we used every penny we had in the last project. And unfortunately, that hit the cutting board that we couldn't do that one little segment. But we will be getting to that. And we have to schedule that usually during the summer when the when the school is out. But it's a very small segment. It's like 50 feet of pavement and it is on our radar now.
I have a a couple of questions, then we'll go to comments and deliberations. Well, questions. So part of the sources of funds is the 3% gas tax. And it's it's modeled based upon a 3% annual increase. Yet what I hear multiple times is that because of all the electric cars and I guess plug-in hybrids also in California, that the gas tax revenues are not expected to increase or it's going to the state government is looking at how can they replace some of that money lost to electric vehicles? Is that the 3% still increased, annual increase still a reliable source? Or maybe better, the question is, how much of that 3% sales tax is critical to to this this program?
Yeah, we we're using a software doing putting in parameters for 20 years and, you know, we're trying to have a crystal ball to look forward in time. There's a lot of, you know, we could change the parameter slightly here and there. But overall, we're kind of looking at kind of the general trend, you know? Big factors more of how much money you put into the program versus maybe the escalation. Because in the same, we also have escalations for construction. We have escalate, we have other escalations for interest, that it has a rate of return for interest. So there's a lot of different factors that we put in. 3% was is kind of the conservative number, but it could go up or go down. We, you know, two years ago, three years ago, we had escalations of 7 and 11% in in two different years of construction cost increase. That wasn't 3%. And we and we had to rebid a number of projects. And you know, during COVID, you know, things changed and things were different. The inflation was different. And now the inflation's come down. It's more conservative number. So things could change up and down, but the program in general, it's going to be following those trend lines. And so we might be slightly up or slightly down over that trend line that we were showing in the PCI.
So let me rephrase the question. How important to the budget is that gas tax funding?
Yeah, so 65, so 65% of the and maybe we can bring up another, I don't know if that table has it, but can you look at the table, pull the table up, if you're able to pull that one table up? So primarily, we're the pavement management or the street management is funded by Measure K, 65%. It's also, yeah. Okay, maybe not, that won't show it. Okay, Measure K, 65%. Then then we have garbage impact fees. Okay, and I showed you the trucks. And then we have the then we have the the gas tax, okay?
So it is significant.
Well, you know, it's you have you have two other things that are providing much of the funding also. So so it's going to be a small percentage off of that if we're up or down by that.
So on Charter Way, the slide repair, does that extend onto private property? And do we would we fix, would we take care of that in that case?
The origins of the slide are coming from the town property. Yeah, and it's coming from it's crossed across the multi-lanes. It originates across multi-lanes. And it terminates out, you know, in within our property, but it's it's really originating from the hill, you know, that the street is on.
So it's it's town responsibility then, I guess?
Yes.
Okay. And finally, from a question standpoint, the repairing the streets in in the country club, I I understood they were owned by the country club.
About one-fourth of the About one-fourth of the streets are public streets. And so these are primarily, as you go into the Country Club, they're kind of the backbone and they go out a little bit and then they stop. So they don't actually go continue up in any direction and it goes private from there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions first. Thank you for the thorough and detailed presentation. So within this, you've got kind of overtime, 2012, PCI 49, now we've worked that up to, or you've worked it up to, a 78. Just in general, how long does it take for a street to go from a good to fair or a fair to poor, just generally?
Yeah, the typical design standard is for a street to be 20-year life. So you would repave it typically if you had, if you had the money and you could design it properly, it's a 20-year life. So not very, not very long, relative to the amount of streets that we have. And so for us to overlay streets every 20 years, if that was our practice, we quickly wouldn't be able to keep up. And so that's where that balanced approach comes out with it. Maybe I can go back and slide if you wanted me to. It shows where that line is going and you try to arrest the decline.
Right.
The cheaper treatment.
Gotcha. Now, that's helpful. And as the mayor had mentioned with the slide repair, are there any other potential high-hazard areas of concern that aren't currently in the presentation that we might think would fall within that 20-year plan?
We've taken an approach with Canyon Road to monitor it and make spot repairs as it goes outside of town, outside of the bridge. And we have it as a concept design, what we could imagine Canyon Road be if there was ever any kind of additional traffic load from whatever source it would be outside of town and how that road would be developed. Currently, it's in, again, in a hilly area with changing topography and ground. And we basically, as issues arise, we do spot repairs. And we wouldn't want to invest a lot of money until there is actually something on the other side that would be the driver. But those are kind of the larger projects that come to mind. We have Bolden Canyon that also has those kind of things that we, it's a very long section of road that goes up to a number of homes. And we do spot repairs along that. And we also arrest the rocks that come down on the road, we also clean those things up. So those are kind of the spot areas that, other than what we mentioned, that we look at, but we don't have plans to do like a major project to change, to reconstruct those broad streets.
Understood. Thanks for speaking to my street as well, too. So further, you'd mentioned sales tax as a revenue source for other communities. Is it something that we've looked into? As the mayor had mentioned, there might not be this return on a gas tax given EVs and if we're looking for other ways to firm up funding to try to maintain that balanced approach. Is there a way for us to, say, speculate on what future redevelopment in alignment with our general plan could aid in us maintaining streets?
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, if we do have redevelopment, those developments would bring in new infrastructure or streets around them, of course. But also the sales tax, property tax would also go up because of those influx of the people, which would make available for additional sales tax and property tax that would go into the town to help maintain the existing infrastructure and the infrastructure into the future. So that would be beneficial in the long run for the town if we had an additional, you know, concentrated or planned development that would provide some additional income to the town.
Gotcha. Yeah, because with Measure K came through at a time when there was lower-quality streets, therefore motivating people to approve it and therefore leverage the funds, might be a little more challenging with streets in good quality condition to compel them to continue to put forth dollars into the effort.
Yeah, as the graph showed, we would quickly start turning the other direction because I mentioned, you know, it was some, to maintain the 78 was like $6 million. And we don't have that much funding and let alone if we have a reduction of 65% of the funding that we do have, the streets would quickly start declining.
Gotcha. And I'll wrap it up here because mayor covered my material cost escalation. But aside from the temporary inconvenience of our residents, I'm just curious, how are we receiving comments, capturing residents' concerns, rolling that into future planning efforts?
The policy is new to, you know, to the town, it just was recently passed. And we've gotten very favorable comments when people learn that they will not be responsible during one of these Measure K-sponsored projects, that, you know, thousands of dollars potentially that they could be having, be responsible for the concrete repairs. We've got a lot of compliments from the public. And before that, we struggled as staff to collect all that money. It was quite an endeavor to try to get everybody to pay up so we could go out and actually do the projects. Projects were delayed as we tried to line up the payments and get it all done before we started the project. And it was affecting the program itself, doing all this collection work. And so the town council has thankfully got us out of that collection business and into the repairing of the road business. And it's made it a lot more streamlined and the community is very appreciative of that.
Awesome, thank you.
One question with regard to Charter Way again. I know there's another item on the capital improvement, the CIP list, to do a safe crosswalk to the trailhead. So would that, would the timing be that there could be slide repairs? Slide repair would be first and then in conjunction with that, add on these funds and do that work? Or how will you balance that, those two items?
Yeah, thankfully, the potential crosswalk there is not located in the same area of the slide. And so they'd be uncoupled. Yeah, so we could proceed with either of the projects on an independent path.
Great, thanks.
Comments? And I think staff is looking for our input on whether we endorse their selection of the one strategy, which is Strategy 5. I have a pretty long history with the roads and if it's okay, maybe I'll kick this off. First thing I want to note is that with regard to covering the costs of sidewalk repairs, in fact, we really need to give, tip our hat to the current town manager who really convinced us, and it was not an easy thing, that it was really, the smart thing to do is to cover those costs. And it was philosophically a challenge because we were so used to, you know, toeing the line the other direction. So I commend him. And I, you know, what a success story, Sean and your crew, something we can, you should be very, very proud of. And I did play a small role back in 2012 of walking the neighborhoods with the samples of the different types of cap seals and what have you, or paving options. And I get all sorts of positive feedback, especially the people who had the worst streets when they were finally addressed. They're really, really ecstatic that it's complete and fixed. And going back to sidewalks for a minute, I also can testify that the efforts trying to get the residents to pay for the sidewalk repairs, I think a description of nightmare is a pretty, pretty good one. And I got called out for a number of heart-to-heart talks with citizens. And, you know, switching to the worst first, what a smart move that was. I commend that. And hiring, that was not, not an easy necessarily, easy thing to decide on, move forward because we are such a small town and underfunded. But I'm so glad to hear that, you know, Dredge, it's working out. And that sort of brings me on to storm drains. Again, something near and dear to my heart because we've had three catastrophic failures of our corrugated steel culverts, unexpected. And so, you know, especially that type, we really have to be suspicious of. They do have a design life, concrete lasts three, four, five times longer. And it's great that Measure K funds have been able to be used for the culverts under the roadways to repair and replace. And I certainly support earmarking some of these Measure K funds for culverts that are not under the roads. We do have the authority to deviate from roadways with the Measure K. In fact, anyway, that's another story. So I support that. And I also support the Option 5 as you guys proposed for the strategy to move forward. Yes?
Okay, I make a couple of comments.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Steve, thank you for the feedback to staff. That was a tough road in 2023 because you'll remember, there was constant feedback from the residents as the bills were going out there. So that was a great policy move. I don't think you've met anybody who's complained about that, right? A few comments based on some of the statements and questions asked. So going forward, the funding sources will be a little bit challenging, let's just say, and a little bit uncertain. And there's a lot of talk, you might have heard about it when you're at conferences, and I know that city managers and public works directors and the city attorneys talk about this, as more and more of the population shifts to electric vehicles or non-gas vehicles, the question is, where would the funding come from, from the roads? And I think there's going to be a tipping point. And then the state will come in and say, look, these vehicles, no matter how they're powered, are having an impact. So there will likely be a tax or a fee on electricity or the other source. And then I think ultimately, there'll always be people that hate having to pay anything, right? But ultimately, most automobile users will see that benefit in the link, right? So we are aware of that. And Sean and his team have to take that into consideration when they show you projections of revenue. But also, going back to the point, when we have more infill development, that will clearly benefit our roads. Because remember, there's impact fees? So when projects come in and if there's a traffic light that has to go in, like we know at Maraga, oh, it's Canyon, I think, right, Sean? Canyon and Country Club.
Yes.
It meets the requirements to have a signal. So as development comes in down there, they will pay in for their fair share. So that'll benefit roads. There's other funding mechanisms you've heard me talk about, and we'll hear more and more about this, whether it's the EIFDs, Enhanced Infrastructure Financing Districts, or the Resiliency Districts. There's a lot of state programs out there. So we are hopeful. I'm not going to give up on this because I've seen it work in dozens of other communities throughout the state as new development takes place. If the Ream Center or the Maraga Center, just two examples, as they redevelop, there's an opportunity to do a district like this. And without getting into the details of the finance, we can capture some of the property tax that's going to be paid anyhow. We can capture money and partner with the county to use that money to deal with infrastructure impacts on these developments. And that could include sidewalks, curb gutter, apron, driveway, and maybe even some of the adjacent streets. So thinking outside the box, but these are clearly tools that are out there. Not a new tax, but a more efficient way. And you can leverage funds to go after state grants and other sources. So we are looking at that. The policy shift on the sidewalks, though, we did, as a consequence, lose a little bit of money, a few hundred thousand dollars a year that would have been spent on the streets or storm drains. So it's going back to that. And also some of the drainage projects. So if Sean's crew has to go in and redo a street and you have a drainage issue, it goes on to the private property. There are some instances when we can take care of that. So I say all this, Sean mentioned 2032 is when Measure K expires. We are working toward, if we go of an approach where we keep showing the community they're getting full bang for their dollar, right? Their sales tax dollar, then to perhaps extend Measure K for a period, 10, 20, 30 years, whatever, with a commitment to maintain the roads and deal with the sidewalks. It's a big burden for our residents, and not just the cost, but also you go down our streets in the residential areas, it looks a little chaotic, right? Some houses have a nice sidewalk in front because they've taken care of it, they can afford it, others, just it's falling apart. We could spruce up the neighborhoods and the appearance and the safety. And that minimizes liability for the residents because they're ultimately responsible for those sidewalks. So if more and more claims come in, they might, residents might be motivated. So we're thinking strategically. And we're just saying it upfront, we will likely, as your staff recommend to you, to consider extending Measure K in the future, subject to the voters approving.
And storm drains.
Whatever the council is interested in when you go to the voters, it's a general tax right now and it's not, it's not labeled, it's being used for anything specific. But I just wanted to give that background. Sean did a great job with these PowerPoints. This was really, really good. We can almost keep a copy of this presentation as a primer. So I just want to end with this pun, if you will. This town is now on the road to financial sustainability and independence with respect to streets, sidewalks, curbs, gutter, driveways and apron. So it's good stuff. So and I would also like to echo the council's comments on the three professionals in the room and the other staff. We're lean, we're mean, we're efficient, but I'm really proud of these professionals. Thank you for allowing me to make those comments.
Other, other town council members, your input including on?
Yeah. Sure. So just big congratulations to the whole engineering department. I've never worked in a city that had a rating like this. Even the wealthy ones, Pleasanton, Palo Alto, I mean, they're almost there, but they're not as good as us. It's really remarkable and very different than when I moved here quite a while ago. So that's great, and I do support Option 5. That seems like a reasonable approach. That's it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Took the words out of my mouth, Councilmember Dolan. First of all, first and foremost, I would like to commend staff for their approach to the work they've done. And I think everyone in this community recognizes and appreciates that. I don't think they know what a hard job it was to get here, but congratulations on the 78. And second of all, based on the terrific staff report that you provided us, it does seem to me that the most reasonable, balanced approach is number five, and I would be in favor of that.
Appreciate it.
Agree with the statements by other council members. Thank you, appreciate your work.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Anything else? Oh, public comment, yes. I see no members of the public, so we can move on. And that takes us to Item 10, Councilmember Request for Future Agenda Items. Anyone have a request? I would like to request at a, for a future agenda item, a brief presentation discussion on what I found out about farmers market and related interfacing with this, our stakeholders, and certainly what Danville does and what we can learn from that and maybe how we can potentially apply it in Maraga. So that's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those, and any discussion, any public comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Informational items, we don't have any, do we have any informational items? Scott, Town Manager, follow-up and announcements?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, by way of follow-up from tonight, so I'll work with the mayor on the farmers market item, we'll find a date that works well with the agenda. the agenda forecast. Don't think I have any other follow-up from topics on the agenda, but I do have a couple announcement items. Let's see, the next meeting will be on April 23rd. And we have a couple of budget items as we go through the budget process and then maybe we'll be able to come back, come to council with the Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan Consultant Recommendation for you to give thumbs up to select. I believe we're still moving on that, right, the 23rd? I have it on the forecast here, but, so that's coming up. And then I've been asked to make a plug for, we're talking about cornhole thing, but there's pickleball coming up. So the pickleball tournament in collaboration with the Arinda Team Advisory Council, that'll be on this Sunday, April 13th, over at the Arinda Community Center Park. And the summer activity guides for Maraga should be in the mail in a couple of weeks. Those are always pretty cool. The spring fleeing family dance at the Hacienda will be on May 2nd. All right, you'll hear more about that. So that's it, by way of town manager follow-up. Actually, I wanted to point out that you, we had the closed session starting the town manager review, so tomorrow marks my second, beginning of my third year. So two years. I'm still here, so thank you. That's it.
I, with that, I hereby adjourn this meeting. It is 6:46.